Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arbester. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good, move for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, takes us down to the city administrators' report.
Okay, I had the pleasure of meeting with Chris Collins, the new superintendent for the National Park Service, and everything he told me is what I think we already knew, so I don't have anything new to report. Still gonna take probably twelve months to get things going, and he's interviewing for maintenance people, so he's starting to get his staff up and going. Finally got hold of the Corps of Engineers regarding the disposal of silt after the flood. FEMA, as you recall, said that they wanted to know from the Corps of Engineers that removing, returning the silt and mud to the river was the proper thing to do, even though for the last nine years, that's what FEMA told us to do. But the Corps cooperated, we got the information, and we have a meeting tomorrow to go over the final project. AT&amp;T, the lease option that we signed with them, it's a two-year deal. They paid us $3,500 for the first year. The option fee was $3,500 because we had asked them to landscape the site after the fence goes up, and rather than doing that, we just agreed on a dollar figure and added it to the option fee so that the money would be available at the end of the project. To do that, we received the second $3,500, and so in the budget that you approved, there's a $3,500 landscaping line item for the park department. If we use this $3,500 for the same purpose, we'll do a budget amendment to bring that up to the cash that's available. Alderman Arbester attended the park board meeting, and while she could talk about this when she's committee reports, since I was gonna report on this, she'd like to tell you about the conversation at the park board.
Everything, or just?
Whatever you feel like, do you want to do half now, half later?
I guess we're gonna do this now, not a lot now. Let's start with the AT&amp;T part. The park board has expressed to me that they would like us to redirect the installments from the tower, the money to the park fund for park use, since it's on park property. So they've asked me to bring it to the board so that we could budget it in.
So are you talking about just the $3,500 now, or are you talking about the future revenue?
All future payments.
There's no obligation for you to landscape the area around the tower, that was just considered a kind of a desirable thing to do. If you wanted to allow that $3,500 to be used for some other purpose, we're certainly able to do that. We do a budget amendment to move it into the appropriate line item at that time. I think that's kind of the point here, is whether you want to continue to save that money for landscaping down the road, or would you rather see it used for some other park improvement today? We really don't, even, you know, at the end of next year, we don't know they're gonna put up a tower. I mean, they don't have to, they're paying us for an option.
That $3,500 goes away, though, if they ever build the tower, back to, what was it, 900 and on?
It goes, yes, to 950, I think.
950 and on.
And if that were the case, they would request the rent of the 950, I believe. And all this kind of leads into the other discussions of the park. At the January meeting, the park board accepted an offer from Dunsey Park Planning to develop, which is Nick and Mary Dunsey. Both of them have a long career in parks throughout Missouri. They're going to develop a master plan across all of our city parks, including the skate park, gauge park down there where the flood gauge is, Pinkley Park, Main Street, the Dog Park, and of course Pierre Marquette. They're gonna factor all these parks into this master plan, and with public input and their experience, they'll present the plan to us, and it'll basically be a goal for the park board to work toward as they make changes and improvements and add new features, or maybe the features we have aren't functioning, but it wouldn't be just miscellaneously placing items where they fit and be an efficient and an effective way for people to use the parks more. So we accepted their offer, and they're doing it graciously for free. All they've asked of us is to help cover any costs for like printing documents and stuff, which is expected to be very low, but it seemed too good to pass up, and they've been great to work with so far. So at the meeting on Tuesday, we talked about next steps, now that we've accepted their help, and the next steps will be to issue a survey to the public to understand how they currently use the parks, what parks they do use, and then how they wish they could use the parks. And the Dunseys will take all this information and factor it in. And so the survey's in beta testing right now, it's been sent to all the park board members. As soon as we get any kinks worked out, then we will issue it to the public, and the goal is to get the survey out to the public by early or mid-March, getting as much honest and constructive feedback as we can from city residents and county residents as well, or any potential parkgoers. And once they get all that together, we'll be moving on there and discussing next steps with Nick and Mary. Other than that, there is a small event being planned for Arbor Day and Earth Day, and that's expected to be held on April 18th, 2020, this year. Details are still to come, but the hope is to have kind of a volunteer beautification project, but also activities for children, families, and community residents, so. Yeah, that's something.
Thank you, Ashley, that's great, appreciate the information.
What would you need from this body to have the funds placed in the parks from the tower? Do we need, what would we need specifically to do that?
Tell us that that's what you want to do, and we'll prepare a budget amendment for your next meeting.
Do they have those funds, is there something they'd like to do, or are they waiting to see what the plan produces before making decisions?
They don't have, they don't have a big project at the moment. Right now, projects on the horizon are installing the play equipment at Pinkley Park, that play equipment that's down at the tennis courts right now.
They had to purchase some, I understand there's some netting that's pretty expensive, they spent $2,000 on netting for the...
It's like a cargo netting.
Cargo netting for the playground.
It was, I believe, pretty dry-rotted and not safe to use, so we're gonna replace that, and should be a good addition down there. Right now, we are kind of waiting to settle in with how it's gonna work with the park plan for major purchases, but the hope is, once we get this plan sometime this year, I believe, to make small steps. It could be a while before we reach the final goal of this master plan, I believe it's a five-year plan, but over the years, as we get the funds, we will improve and add amenities to coincide with the plan, so it's a work in progress.
You know, one of the things when we have, we have an extra income like that, I like to see those things earmarked for specific projects over and above normal operating costs and stuff, so that we can see an improvement, rather than just get absorbed into a normal operating budget. I mean, that would be one thing I would like to see.
I thought we already decided that when we signed the contract with them.
You decided, well, the option payment amount reflects the landscaping costs. In addition, normally, you wouldn't, the dollar amount wouldn't be that high. I think the prior discussions had to do with whether the monthly rent would be used for park improvements in the future.
And didn't we decide that it would, or?
Well, but every board gets to decide, every year, what you're gonna do. So we haven't gotten that rent yet, so once they build the tower and start renting it, it will become a budgetary item, and you'll, that board at the time will decide whether to use that income for that purpose.
Because they may not build.
Might not, but right now, we've got the $3,500 they gave us in landscaping in the park budget, we've got another $3,500, we can put it, absent any contrary direction, I would put it in landscaping. But if you would like to see it go into infrastructure improvements, so it could be spent for some other purpose, just tell me, and that's what we'll do.
Do you need a motion, or?
Or just, yeah, I mean, at the time, you'll have, I don't need a motion, I just, just kind of give me a sense of the board, and then we'll prepare the ordinance for your consideration at the next meeting, and you could discuss it at that time.
Do it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
We've had a meeting of the city administrators committee, we culled out applicants that didn't seem appropriate, we got it down to seven applications, and I had called six of them, left a message for the seventh, one has withdrawn. The six that I have talked to, explaining to them there currently was a residency requirement, and finding out what their salary expectations are, we seem to be online, they're willing to work for what we budgeted, what we talked about at the meetings. So progress is being made along those lines. We have a meeting tomorrow at noon of the tourism director committee to look at those applications, decide which of those we want to follow up with, and we will proceed. The auditor's report, I'm sorry, is pulled over from, I forgot to cut, but I'm glad it's there. The auditor, as you know, had an emergency and could not be here at 5:00 for the meeting we had planned. Assume, and you'll tell me if my assumption is inaccurate, that you'd like to reschedule that at 5:00 before our next meeting. I will inform her, and she'll be here. Something is not on here that I just want to kind of bring to your attention. We have two applications for voluntary annexation on Highway 32. One is for El San Felipe, the Mexican restaurant, the other is for a Luna Ice that'll be built across the street, both of which would like to connect to city utilities. We have a provision that requires that someone who connects to utility be within the city limits, except for, there are some exceptions to that. We will have the annexation, it would be at the next meeting day?
Yes.
Okay, ready for you at the next meeting? I'd like to know if it's okay to put it on for two readings, because otherwise it would delay their ability to connect in a timely manner.
Yes.
All right, we'll put it on for two readings.
So how will annexation affect an ongoing building? Do we inspect that building?
No, the building, we will inspect it for occupancy. Now, they turned, they turned in plans, and we reviewed the plans to ensure that the building's conformed with the building codes, although we haven't, because it's out of our jurisdiction, been inspecting. Presumably, they built it according to the plans, but they will still have to pass an occupancy inspection, so we'll, we will, we'll do that.
You're talking about the place across the street, right?
Either or.
For the one that haven't started?
Right, the place across the street, if they come in, they're gonna follow the rule with plans and...
Well, they started to...
They got walls up today.
They got walls up today, one of the buildings.
So they'll probably be in the same situation. You know, again, unless somebody just cut corners or didn't do something they said they were gonna do, there's every reason to believe that it conforms with our codes. Thanks.
You skipped over your meeting with industrial development.
Oh, I'm sorry. I informed you before that we had been meeting on this issue of, and so we had a meeting, and they had an engineer draw up a couple of options for road improvements. The, back when we first approached the church about this, the alignment we designed for Parkwood was following their direction, to keep it as kind of close to the creek as we could. Now, different administration, different leadership, if we do that road and they give us, or sell us the property for it, they would like for it to be further west so that it creates usable property on either side of the new road, and that, so they have that alignment. In addition to which, they looked at ways in which the Parkwood extension could eventually tie into Boslar, still their property, and what, I don't know that they're gonna want to go down that road, but it was looked at, and we talked about ways of, and this is an idea of one of the board members. They don't necessarily want to lose land, because they get income off of the farming, which apparently they intend to do themselves in the future. So there was some talk about whether or not there could be a swap of tillable acres that we own in exchange for the road right-of-way, and so that's something else that will be discussed. So they finally decided, well, it's time to actually meet with the church and the city and see if we're on the same page. So that meeting's scheduled for March the 4th, and I forget what time.
It's 8:45 on the progress.
Eight forty-five.
Corey?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
We have begun updating maps of the fire hydrants around town, hopefully within the next thirty days that will be complete and available for park department, everyone to view. Another thing on their river view at the park, we have talked to them about their grease issues that have been ongoing, and they have taken actions, and there's been improvement already, so we'll continue to monitor that going forward.
They now know where their grease pad is, and they know they gotta figure it out.
Yes.
So even though it, are you guys disputing that, that it should be covered under warranty?
Yes, we are. We, we got a phone call in, and I'm waiting, the response, I haven't heard one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's only four months old?
Yes. Yeah, there's, yeah, it's, it's a back-and-forth argument with it, and like I said, we're just waiting for the rebuttal.
Thank you. Thanks, Corey.
Thanks.
Chief Bennett?
Good evening, Chief.
I have a whole lot to report, one of our vehicles has come in, is getting canceled for the equipment upfitting, still waiting for the other vehicle to be built and sent. Everything is moving around along, still at full staff, and everything seems to be going, going as expected, so anybody have any questions? Perfect, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Any other committee reports? Had a super committee report, Joe, from the park board, anything complaining and zoning?
Good job.
David, that was it.
All right, that takes us to public comments.
Bob Brownie, 498 Merchant Street.
I got a call this morning from Martin telling me that an alderman or alderwoman got a complaint on my obscene banners. Well, you're not, yeah, you said they were obscene to children, the complaint was.
You said, "See, we're okay, quit."
Okay, that's what you said, exactly what you said to me. I said, "No, they're not obscene." And I told Martin I would not take them down, and no disrespect to nobody, I don't care if there's a court order to take them down, they're not coming down. They're not obscene, I'm the first one to not do anything to harm a kid, and they're not obscene to nobody.
You said their banners?
Yeah, their Trump banners, and it says, "No more BS," and that's supposed to be obscene.
It's not what it says.
That's exactly what you said, Martin.
No, no, it's not saying they're more BS.
It says bullshit.
Yes.
And I'm not gonna take them down. Yeah, I'm sure I know who the complaint was. Sorry, one of the ladies that came by my house, that was ranting and raving, F me, F Trump, and she has a business down on Main Street, ones that rant and rave when people come in with Trump hats.
Well, that's all speculation.
Well, hey, I said, I got my feelings, that's my opinion.
Yeah, well, I don't think anybody can make you take them down, so.
I just want to get it out open, I'm not taking them down.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Kara Burt, I'm at 150 Jefferson. I just came by...
Do you want to repeat your name for the microphone?
Kara Burt, 150 Jefferson. I came by just to personally invite you, I am on a transportation task force, I'm the only St. Genevieve representation that is on that task force. I used to work for Community Counseling Center, and I work for an agency called Trendline, which serves the developmentally disabled, and they're expanding their services to St. and Jen. And so this task force originally started because we identified that the developmentally disabled needs transportation to help get to work, to help get to services, to help get to other things, and then it just kind of snowballed from there, and it's, a lot of people need help with transportation and stuff. So we're, we have gotten with the regional planning commission, and we are having a big meeting on March 19th, on Thursday, I'm gonna present to the commissioners on Monday as well. I need some more, I've got more, too.
What time would that meeting be?
It's between 2:00 to 4:00.
And you say Thursday or Friday?
Thursday, March 19th, 2:00 to 4:00. So we have gone as far as to already talk with SMTS, and they are willing to help run a pilot program and fund a part, they told us they would fund the majority. I don't know if the majority is 51% or if it's like 80%, so we have to kind of figure that out. This meeting is basically just to kind of get all the stakeholders together to say, yes, there is a need, yes, we need to work together, yes, we can figure it out, et cetera. We know that we need people to come in to St. Genevieve County and work at the different places here, not sure how it's gonna work, don't know the hours, don't know all those logistics, there's lots of stuff left to figure out, but just wanted to personally invite you to come, if you're able to, to that meeting and help us figure it out. Is this in Perryville? It is in Perryville. It's on, so if you go, if you're coming down 61 to Perryville, and the roundabout where Hardee's is, make a right, and it's like a block and a half up on your right-hand side. It's a big red building, it's got a glass front, it's, it's been brand-new, just redone, so they offered the space to us for free, and it's like enough room for 100 or so, so we jumped on it. Is the, is it a hard time, or does it allow stragglers to come in, if I do have to be there at it, too? I don't, so the regional planning committee is actually who's putting the meeting on, we're meeting next week to go over the actual agenda, but whoever can be there whenever, we would appreciate any support, yes.
For those of us who can't make it because of our work schedule, could we expect to have some kind of briefing or report out from you on this, or how would we get information from the meeting?
Um, I can either come back and report back afterwards, or, yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I'd love to go, but I can't make that.
Sure. We've been working on it for a while, and we finally got through, we actually have an administrator, federal administrator that's out of Chicago, that has been kind of guiding us, and we finally really broke ground last week. You guys are supposed to be getting an invite from the regional planning committee, but I'm not trusting that's gonna happen, that's why you're getting me. So, anyway, if you guys can come, it would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
My work's going with me. I'm sorry.
I don't have a speech, I never thought of how I even wanted to talk to you, but I will say, I know from your side, I was an alderman for four years, so I know what it's like, and I know how people come to you and all different kinds of things. My reason for being up here tonight is, you know, St. Genevieve's not the same as it was years ago, we're coming forward, and it's, and it's amazing, and I truly believe that I'm gonna, I hope I'm not stepping on anyone's toes, but I feel that, I'm not even sure if it's on the agenda tonight, or if you're voting on it, but, huh?
We're in the wait, though.
I'm going to, I just want to tell you a little bit before I tell you. I told you I didn't know how to speak. Anyway, no, I do, anyway, it's on the city limits of, yeah. I just think that when you have somebody that has lived their, lived in the community all their life, has been a part of the community, has graduated, whatever, that has worked super hard in this town, and it could be anyone, but if you have somebody that really cares about our community, living out of town, I don't mean on the northern end of Bloomsville or all the way down almost to Perryville, that's, that's a bit far, but I still, that's still city limits. I just think that we need to really think about who we, who we bring in. I mean, they're gonna be, they're gonna be working with our community, they're gonna be working with people that are the park board, they're gonna be working with everybody that's bringing in things to our community, and right now, we're starting to really come apart, I mean, come alive, and so I just hope that you, before you vote, don't let anybody tell you, I mean, vote your heart, what it's really about. I worked with Buck, he knows me. And Ashley, by the way, welcome to, I mean, to be so young, to be so good, but somebody to come up here and really, just, just think about somebody that's, when we have something going good, we need somebody that will continue and work hard at what we're doing. I know I worked with some city administrators, I've worked with mayors, was one of them, and let me tell you, some of them were good, and some of them we're glad to see, I was glad to see go, but, but, I didn't mean that, it's a mean remark, I just want you, I just don't want anybody to persuade you, say, "Oh, don't vote for this person," or, "Oh, I don't even know who you got." I, I just heard that this was up tonight, because I was actually going to another meeting, but I just want you to know that, that that's how I feel, and I know there's several people that have talked to me about it and said, "Oh, you'll, you'll tell them, just tell them my name," and I said, "No, if you want to go." So there are other people that feel that way, that they just want somebody that really can, that would really care about our communities. Okay?
Thank you. Next, anybody else?
Is this concerning the ordinance?
Yes, it's, and ordinances or public comments, yes.
Okay, all right.
Or anything you'd like to talk about.
Okay, my name is Karen Stupi, I am a city resident... I am a city resident of Ward III District. I'm here this evening to voice my concerns about amending these two ordinances concerning the chief of police and the city administrator, being allowed to live outside the city limits. These are two very distinguished positions, and I feel these ordinances should not be amended to allow the chief of police or the city administrator to live outside the city limits. I personally feel it's an insult to me and every city taxpayer in this room and outside of this building. Their salaries are being paid by the city taxpayers, not the county taxpayers. I requested the current salaries of the city administrator and the chief of police in written form, which is public information. The current gross salary of the city administrator is approximately $93,730. The approximate current gross salary of the chief of police is $74,973, after a $14,705 increase due to the passage of Proposition P. These are very affluent salaries for a city population of a little above 4,000 residents that are being paid by me and every city resident. And as far as the current elected officials stating they won't get any qualified applicants for these positions, at these salaries, you will. I feel you are applying, if you are applying for either one of these positions at these salaries, asking a requirement of these two positions to live within the city limits is not asking much. Why are we changing this now to accommodate certain persons? It looks awful suspicious to me that that's what's exactly being done here. Personally, I feel if these people live within the city limits, they are more apt to care about the city and what's happening within it. I'm really tired of the small-town politics, of some of our elected officials trying to mend the ordinances to accommodate certain persons' needs or wants. The typical good old boy network, if you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours, and I think that's exactly what's going on here. And as far as the housing issues within the city of Saint Genevieve are concerned, the city has a perfect opportunity to sell the land they have on Progress Parkway at a lower value to make new middle-income housing subdivision out there. Also, why aren't we looking into grants or some kind of funding to rehab our older neighborhoods, to get people to move into these older neighborhoods that could be rehabbed? Have you ever seen the show called Hometown on HGTV? There's a young couple by the name of Ben and Erin Nappier from Laurel, Mississippi. They are rehabbing older homes in rundown neighborhoods and are bringing them back to life. Why can't we do that here? I know some elected officials keep bringing up the technology term, and we need to move forward with things, and things are constantly changing because of technology. Technology has nothing to do with amending these two ordinances, and you all know that. As far as the shopping crisis and bringing stores into our town, we need that, we need to make it happen, but in the meantime, people can do what I do. You get on a website called Amazon, clicking a few buttons, you can have anything delivered to your doorstep in one day. Okay, back to the chief of police position. I feel that it's very vital that he or she live within the city limits. God forbid there's another shooting, a shooting going on somewhere within the city limits. And unfortunately, that has just happened, two major times, two times this week, major shootings have taken place. And I feel if our chief of police happens to live in the northern or western part of the county, and it would take him or her 15 to 20 minutes to get there, if he or she happens to be home when this situation arises, that's a lot of delayed response time. If the chief of police resides within the city limits, he or she could approximately be on-site within five minutes. He or she is the chief of police for the city of Saint Genevieve, not the county. Is the city of Saint Genevieve so awful to live in? I don't think so. I love being in town, close to the restaurants, the stores, the schools, the hospital, the doctor's offices, and my workplace. So, what's next? The mayor of Saint Genevieve doesn't have to live within the city limits? I think amending these ordinances is wrong. I know standing here this evening, I'm going to make a lot more enemies than I am friends, but right is right and wrong is wrong, and amending these two ordinances to accommodate two people just isn't right. You wanted my feedback, you wanted feedback from city residents, so here I am, in person, giving you my feedback. Thank you for your time and hearing me out this evening.
Can I comment on what you just said?
Tell me.
Can I comment on what you ladies just said?
Mm-hmm.
I'm Bob Brownie again. As far as what the chief of police makes, he does a lot more in this town than just police. I mean, he does a lot of stuff. And, you know, for him living out of town, I mean, if somebody, if the bomb was dropped here, I mean, there's other people to cover, I mean, it's just not him. And, you know, I mean, if this town's so bad, why don't you move? That's all I got, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Most of you know Claudia Stupi. I'm here as a city of Saint Gene resident. I'm here to talk about the proposed changes to the residency requirements. In my opinion, I think for those two positions, you should live in the community that you're serving, you should live under the ordinances that you're enforcing, basically. You know, I don't feel like we, I don't, I think somebody made the comment about this being archaic or something along those lines.
I probably said that quote.
You know, Perryville and Farmington, they still have those requirements. Their city administrator and their chief of police are still required to reside in the city, so I don't feel like we are, you know, behind the times by any means. I think, you know, you already have applicants, you have, you know, what is it, six applicants that you're looking at right now. So, I don't see the residency requirement as being an issue. As far as lack of housing, I mean, go out to Zillow and type in Saint Genevieve or the zip code, I mean, there's houses out there in the city. I mean, there are, starting from low-end $80,000 up to, you know, over $200,000, there's houses out there for sale. So, I think that's kind of a weak reason to change these ordinances, so. But, yeah, I would encourage the aldermen to consider just leaving things as they are. I don't see a need to change it, I don't think it's broke. Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia.
My name's Carl Kinsky. I live at 64 North Second Street here in town, and I want to start by saying that my opinions are not necessarily Susie Johnson's opinions. We disagree on many things, and we will continue to disagree on many things. So, these are just my opinions here today. You know, we hear a lot of times that government needs to run more like a business, that government needs to look over taxpayers' dollars the same way that a business looks over its own dollars, and that government needs to be as efficient as a business. In my opinion, a requirement of residency basically handcuffs an employer. If you have a residency requirement, you're going to narrow the pool of applicants, you're going to have to pay more for less. It's a basic function of supply and demand. You may have five to seven people who are saying, "Yeah, I'm still interested in the job," but that doesn't mean if you offer it to them tomorrow, or a week, or a month from now, that they're going to take the job. Of course, they're not going to take their name out of the running at this point, but a basic law of any free enterprise system is supply and demand. And if you're limiting the supply by saying, "Only people who will actually move in," you're limiting your options, and you're handicapping yourselves. Now, there's been mention of Perryville and Farmington. The problem is, this isn't Perryville, and this isn't Farmington, it's Saint Genevieve. You look at most of the counties around here, the rural counties, you'll see that the county seat has 50% of the population of the county, or that at least 50% of the population of a county lives in an incorporated area, but not in Saint Genevieve County. And it's never going to happen in Saint Genevieve County for two reasons. People have underground rights over a lot of land, and nobody is going to build a subdivision if Mississippi Lime has underground rights on it. And we've got a lot of land that is prone to flooding. So, you're not going to see nice subdivisions suddenly sprouting up in the city of Saint Genevieve the way you'll see them in Perryville and the way you'll see them in Farmington. So, maybe Perryville and Farmington can have swanky Ladue-type subdivisions popping up, but we're not going to see that in Saint Genevieve. And we're not going to see areas out in the county begging to be incorporated in the city. It's not going to happen. So, we've got to recognize we're operating under a free-market system, and that this is the city of Saint Genevieve, and we're going to have limited housing stock. Now, I want to talk also about the problems of enforcing a residency requirement. You know, I bought my first house in this county from a Saint Louis city cop who was dodging the city residency requirement, and his family lived in Saint Genevieve County, and he had a room that he paid for that was basically a flop house when he was working in the city. I don't know how you're going to enforce a residency requirement, really, in this situation. What if you hire somebody who says, "Yeah, I'll move to the city, I promise," swear on a sack of bibles, and the guy turns out to be, I say guy, I'm sorry, I need to apologize to my wife whenever I make a slip like that. But you hire somebody who's a city administrator, and they're doing a fine job, but they keep kicking down the can. They say, "I can't find a house, my wife, husband, doesn't want to move there, we're still looking, we're still looking." At what point are you going to say, "No, stop?" And what are you going to do if the person rents a flop house, or rents someplace and is claiming that they live there? You know, these residency requirements often are fudged by city cops, by other people all the time. These are not easy-to-enforce rules. So, the next thing I want to ask is, what is the advantage of a residency requirement? You know, we're not talking about whether you should consider proximity or residency as a factor in making employment. You should. You should consider how close somebody lives to Saint Genevieve and whether they live in the city of Saint Genevieve. But you're talking about not just making that a factor, but making that a determinative factor. You're talking about basically handcuffing yourselves, and why would you do that? Why, if you've got somebody who you think is good, would you not hire him because they live outside? Yes, it should be a factor, but it shouldn't be a determinative factor. You're handcuffing yourselves for no good reason. Now, I heard talk about the old boys' network. You know, if you, there is no old boys' network, for heaven's sake, whoever you hire for a position as city administrator, a city chief, hire the best person for the job, period, no ifs, ands, or buts. And I'm confident that you all will do that, or at least I'm confident that you all will try to do that, which brings me to another point. You know, I hear a lot of this, "Do the right thing." Well, obviously, I think what I'm saying is the right thing, and other people out there probably don't think that what I'm saying is the right thing, but certainly the fact that I say it's the right thing doesn't make it the right thing. And also think about, frankly, what I would say is the drawback of a residency requirement for certain positions. You don't have to make the residency requirement for every position, you don't have to make it uniform. You've got a city prosecutor and a city attorney who, in my opinion, are doing excellent jobs, who are not residents of the city of Saint Genevieve, and there's no reason for them to be. Now, as for a city administrator position, to my mind, there are pitfalls to requiring him to be a resident, and there are even pitfalls to having a city administrator be a resident. You know, that city administrator, if he is a resident, is going to live in some specific ward, and if you decide, or the city administrator recommends that he repair a pothole within, close to his house, there are going to be people who think that he's doing it because it's close to his house. And if he doesn't, or she doesn't, they're going to be thinking, "Oh, he's just bending over backwards to appear fair, and so he's giving the shaft to his own ward." You know, there's a reason why you want, some of you may want to have a city attorney who is not a resident, because you don't want to have the good old boy network, because you want a decision about what pothole gets fixed to be based on what's for the whole city and not what for one particular ward. Folks, nobody, and I understand if you disagree with me on that and think that it's a great idea to have the city administrator live in town, but don't handcuff yourself. Just make that a factor in your hiring decision. If you've got a great police chief who lives a little bit out in the county, go for the great police chief. Don't handicap yourselves. That, you know, to me, this isn't a difficult decision. Run this city, at least in this respect, like a business, and hire the best person that you can possibly get. Thank you.
Last call, public comments?
No.
Okay.
Hang on. Okay, I will dispute that the subdivisions, yes, I know there is a lot of subdivisions that are built over the land, the undermining in town. Valley Springs is one of them, nice subdivision. They have, the Mississippi Lime has underground rights there. Mississippi Lime has underground rights under, which is not in the city limits, I think, Windsor Village, very nice subdivision, but is not within the city limits. My subdivision, which is a nice subdivision, does not have underground city rights. So, if someone's looking for a house, you can go to Roger Edition, and Mississippi Lime Company does not have underground rights there, in my case.
Thank you.
I'm Shannon McCride. I live at 103B North Main Street. One, you're going to make sure that you've got a really solid job description set for this person, and they're going to be highly qualified for this position, and maybe they're going to want to live here. That's a possibility, and certainly seems reasonable to me that that might happen. I don't see why not. And then to you, hi, I'm Shannon. I just want to acknowledge your right to put whatever you want. I disagree with you, but do what you want. I got no problem with it. So, that's what I'm concerned, and I'm hearing something that I kind of don't understand in that this has come up, for some reason, with an assumption that it's because of a person that you want to put in. I'm hearing that frequently, so I'm wondering if you can just address that? Did this come up because you have someone in mind who doesn't want to live here? Is that what, is this how this started?
Want me to answer that?
Yeah, how did it start?
Well, it started with me long ago. I've been waiting for this day with Martin for quite a while, because I know he's a senior, and he's on his way out. And I've always been thinking about that, but, you know, we do have an applicant, and he's in the room, he's applied for the job, and he works for the city right now, and it is David Boe.
Okay.
And I'm not ashamed to say, he's, we don't know where the, we have him and a young lady that's, so we have seven people, or six people now to talk about. There's no guarantees, but my view on it is, is, and what this situation has done, and what I've been hearing from county residents, it seems to me that if you, and I get that what Karen talks about, the city people are paying for it, but, you know, and there was another comment that we're worried about this person spending, you know, being invested in the city and spending money in the city, I get that, but nah, you can't, there's not anybody in this room that can tell me that they buy absolutely everything in the city. We go to the county, we go to Farmington, we move around, you know, so, yeah, it's, and then what we're going to talk about is, is if somebody that does live in the county that's qualified for this job because, and they've lived here all their life, that they're not part of the city for some reason, and it causes the... life, that they're not part of the city for some reason, and it causes division. And that's all we talk about. For three years now, I've been working with the county to bring unity in, and here's a subject that's going to cause more division. You know, we're trying to work through this, but I just, I don't, that's my issue. That's my problem. And we have city workers. There's a young lady that's sitting right here that's worked for this city for forty-some-odd years that does not live in the city. And she is vested in this job and does a great job, and has been doing a great job for a lot of years, and she loves the city. And also, it's a matter for me is, we're not talking about this person living in St. Louis, and I had a letter from a young man that talks about that, and we're talking about somebody that we're going to restrict them to live in the county, you know? And it's a lousy term, and there was a lot of discussion over the whole thing, but what they were trying to do in St. Louis is incorporate better together. You know what? This county and this city is better together. The county invested, and I paid for part of it, the county paid for part of it, a beautiful water park that the city people get to enjoy, and it's ours. It's not just the county's, it's the city. And that's where I think we got to bring this together. That's my whole point of it.
Right.
And it just makes good sense.
Yeah, and I'm standing here basically for the sole purpose of listening to everything people are saying and trying to make sure that they got heard, you know? I, like, I heard something along the lines of, "They're doing this for a specific person for a reason that's now been addressed, and you can take it or leave it for what it's worth."
Well, that's the truth of the matter. I'm not lying here.
Yeah, so.
And anybody can apply. There could be, right now, there is, because we, anybody could send an application, but we've already looked at a bunch, people from all over the place.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Make it quick, Martha, because we've got to move on.
I just want to, I just want to say, I couldn't have done this from back there. I just want to say, if you're talking about David, I just want you to know that David lived in town all these years until not too long ago before he moved down, so.
Any other questions or any comments? With that, we'll close the public hearing. And at six fifty-two, we will, I'm sorry, the public comments, at six fifty-two, we'll have a public hearing, start a public hearing. Just need to read that. All right, David, you want to read, come up and address this?
Absolutely.
Want me to read it, or? Yeah, I can read it.
I'll give you a quick breakdown, if that's okay. Let me read it.
Let me read it. The mayor and the board of aldermen will hold a public hearing to consider requests for a special use permit from Bridget Bennett to operate a winery tasting room gift shop with brewing and bottling on-site at 245 Merchant Street in a C2 central business district.
I'll be brief. She's been through all the steps. This is basically the same use as has existed in the building, except she doesn't technically want to brew. She wants ferment in the basement and bottle in the basement, a use that's not called out in our city zoning ordinance. It's up to you. This is Ms. Bridget Bennett, who the special use permit would be for.
That's me. Bridget Bennett. I guess on the low light of the meeting, which is kind of good for me, but I'm willing to answer any questions you have. I think probably everybody read the comments and stuff in the paper and looking forward to being part of the community, and if you have any questions, just let me know.
I would make a motion to approve the amendments as stipulated in our documentation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to old business, bill reading, bill number forty-three forty-two. An ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve municipal ban.
Motion to approve.
Bring it. I'll have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three forty-two now becomes ordinance forty-two sixty-nine.
Thank you. Bill number forty-three forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three forty-three now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number forty-three forty-four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve County Community Access Television Board, channel nine ninety-nine ninety-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three forty-four now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-one.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number forty-three forty-five. An ordinance amending chapter four ten, historic preservation, article three, landmarks in historic districts, division two, certificate appropriateness, design guidelines, and standards by adding section four ten dash three nine five dash determination of unnecessary hardship.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three forty-five now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-two.
Thank you. Bill number forty-three forty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional services for cochrane engineering for water main replacement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three forty-six now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-three.
Thank you. This takes us to bill number forty-three forty-seven. It'll be a first and second reading needed. Bill number forty-three forty-seventh, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve amending chapter one fifteen, city officials, article six, city administrator, section one one five point one nine oh, appointment qualifications of the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Have one motion to approve. Do I have a second? With no second, there will be no further process. Bill number forty-three forty-eight, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve amending chapter two hundred, the police department, section two hundred point zero one five. Chief of police, appointment, term salary removal, the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? With no second, it's a dead issue. New business, bill number forty-three forty-nine, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of lime residuals from the water treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number forty-three fifty, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for removal and land utilization of residuals from the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill number forty-three fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional services with cochrane engineering for a five-year supervised program to help aid in the development of a capital improvement plan for water lime replacement within the city waterworks system.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other business? With that, there's no other business, and I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Thank you.